Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole to order. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons, Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Jacobson.
Here.
Mr. Madigan.
Here.
Ms. Marlin.
Here.
Mr. Roberts. Mr. Smythe.
I'm still here.
Mayor Pressing.
Here.
Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, we have staff report tonight. Libby Tyler.
Brendan Boyes sent out an economic development report, and I wanted to highlight some of those items. And first, I'd like to pass out this invitation and reminder that coming up this Friday will be another movie night at the Bucy Bank parking lot in downtown, and this movie is Up!, which is a great movie, and if you haven't been to one of the movie nights, they're a lot of fun. Bring a chair to sit on. Some other announcements, also this Saturday will be the International Beer and Chili, let's see, International Beer Tasting and Food Truck Showcase, and that's in the parking deck, so that'll be September 13th, Saturday, another big event. Couple other announcements, we just received notification from Illinois Arts Council that we received $4,250 in grant funds for operations for our public art program, and last week, we were recognized by the Eastern Illinois Food Bank for a Community Impact Award for our Farm to Food Bank Program, that the Market at the Square runs whereby foods are provided to the food bank each Saturday that the market runs, so that was a really great recognition to get there. Some highlights from the economic development report, the Art Party Studios moving into Lincoln Square and the former location of Wind Water and Light, it sounds like a very interesting and fun event space where you can actually go with a group of friends and create art and have fun and learn some things as well. We are continuing on city staff to work with PGAV on the field inventory for the downtown and researching a potential new downtown tax increment finance district. An update here on Miss Possible, which is a startup working in the collab space and their success on an Indiegogo campaign to raise funds for their program which seeks to engage girls in science and technology. If you've driven along University Avenue, you'll see not only the demolition for campus circle is well underway, but there's now a crane on the site, and it's really a welcome sight to see a crane again in Urbana, so that's exciting. I think we might have mentioned that our Developers Roundtable, we're rebranded to Business and Development Luncheon, so we held this first of the rebranded event August 13th, and the focus was on Downtown Urbana Special Event Showcase. So that's an event that we hold quarterly at the Civic Center, and of course, council members are always welcome. The Annual Sweet Corn Festival was a big success for Urbana Business Association, for the community as a whole, with over 40,000 participants, and this despite some really humid weather and then the downpour Saturday afternoon, but great crowds regardless. Last month, August 3 through 9, we recommend, or we celebrated National Farmers Market Week, and that was with a proclamation and a series of events with tote bags for our 35th anniversary for Market at the Square. There is an on-air presence that the Market at the Square is having each Monday on CI Living, which is a show on W CIA News Channel 3. It's an afternoon program, and this is to promote our market vendors. There is a new piece of public art by the Library at Green and Cedar called Astoray, and there's a photograph of that provided in the report. Also, just outside here in our corridor, we're featuring a new artist, Jill Stroberger, who is a self-taught artist and topiary designer. We're continuing work on the Urbana Enterprise Zone application and have made a number of presentations to potential partners in this program, including the Urbana School District, Urbana Park District, and Champaign-Urbana Mass Transit District. And again, we're working with the City of Champaign, Champaign County, and the Economic Development Council on that effort. Our business, Urbana Business Survey is underway now for 2014, and this will remain open until September 19th. Our economic development intern who helped prepare the survey and roll it out, Grace Kyung is now returned to the university to complete her masters in urban planning, and so we are looking for applications on, for a new economic development intern. Also mentioned that we're heading into second interviews on economic development managers as well. And finally, I just wanted to note that we are, on staff are participating on a committee along with the University of Illinois Division of Intercollegiate Athletics, City of Champaign, Visit Champaign County, several other partners, to submit a proposal to the IHSA to bring back the boys' basketball tournament to the State Farm Center, which was here for many, many years and now is in Peoria, so there's an opportunity to bring that event back for a term of five or more years. Any questions?
Bill?
Yeah, a couple of questions on the business survey. I looked through, I had to enter some like faults information in order to get all the way through it because it wouldn't let me go on, so you might have to delete my line, but I didn't read all the questions. I was wondering if there's a way to make that available in paper form, and I know it's similar to the previous surveys that were done, were those online-only surveys as well?
This is our first online.
So, so it may, hopefully everyone uses online surveys now, but there may still be people, especially in the construction industries, that may not be sitting at a computer all day and would prefer a paper survey. Would there be a way to provide that in a paper form?
Absolutely. We send out paper postcards to alert people to the survey, and so we can have alternate means for those who don't have easy internet access.
Okay, thanks. And then another question, since we're in the memo for 301 and 303 Thompson today, it mentioned that we will be demolishing that old church there in September, and I know that was held up because of some environmental checking, and I assume it was kind of the same problem with Urbana Town Homes, so I was wondering if there's any update on Urbana Town Homes, if that even environmental problems have been solved, if that will be demolished soon.
Yeah, on Thompson, we were able to find funds that the environmental work had already been completed. We've submitted our environmental document for Urbana Town Homes, and that has gone through one level of HUD, and I believe there's two more levels, so we are estimating perhaps four more weeks, three to four more weeks, and we'll be looking for some assistance. I know Kelly has been really good about nicely checking in with the HUD folks, so it's been through one level of review, and I think it has a few more levels of review once that's complete, and we need a waiver as well because this was not done initially, we'll get the go-ahead to start the project up again, both in terms of demolition, but also in seeking the developer.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, we're on it.
Any other questions for Libby? Charlie?
Oh, no, I was, next topic, but, no. Yeah, I was gonna give a, I was gonna give a report on ITV3 and UC2B tonight, but I forgot my props. I only brought one, I had a stack of them by the door. So I'll do it next week, but I did want to give you a heads-up. Levi Dinkla from ITV3 would, and I think Brandon will come with him, Brandon Bowersacks-Johnson will be with him, give a full-blown report on UC2B ITV3 activities at our meeting in two weeks from today, so that will be an agenda item on that committee meeting, and you'll have a chance to ask Levi questions and get fully updated. But I'll get you these next week.
Thank you. Mayor?
Better turn my mic on. Last year was kind of a difficult year in the Finance Department, and we had a hard time getting the certificate or the CAFER done, which is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. It took a little longer, but we did get the award from the Government Finance Officers' Association of the United States and Canada for excellence in financial reporting, and this is for the year ended June 30th, 2013. So, that's good to know, and Rich Henshaw really did a great job on this. I'm sorry that he had to leave, it was for family reasons, but he did do a good job while he was here, and we're searching for another very competent comptroller.
Thank you. Bill Gray?
I'm pleased to report that as a result of ASME union contract negotiations last week, we came to a tentative agreement. The union membership voted on that agreement Fri- Friday night and ratified it, so City Council will be considering that language in the agreement, I believe, at its September 22nd meeting, so that was good news.
Great news. Any other staff reports? Okay, next up is approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Are there any corrections?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, those are approved. Is there anyone wishing to address the council at this time? I just have one input card, and that is for at the time on the agenda. Okay. Next up is ordinance number 2014-09-082, which is an ordinance authorizing an addendum to mutual aid box alarm system agreement with the fire department, and we have all received a revised copy of the ordinance. Brian Nightlinger.
Okay, I guess, are there any questions over what you've read? Basically, what this ordinance is, it changes the original contract that we had with MABUS that happened in 2000, and they've identified some problems with getting reimbursements through FEMA, through the Stafford Act, and this recommendation has been put out to all the fire departments statewide to, and we've been asked to pass the addendum by ordinance and with the adjusted language, which would make it easier for us to get federal reimbursement in case of we're deployed to a major disaster, is basically what it is. This doesn't affect our day-to-day mutual aid. We have a different mutual aid agreement with the county departments than with the City of Champaign, so this doesn't apply to that mutual aid agreement at all. This is just in the case of a MABUS deployment, if our fire resources were deployed, or if our technical rescue team was deployed, or if we needed resources in our community. It just gives us a vehicle by which to receive reimbursement for those expenses.
Any questions for the chief? Is there a motion?
Yeah, Mike and I are trying to decide who's gonna say it, do it. I'll move dissent ordinance 2014-982, an ordinance authorizing an addendum to mutual aid box alarm system agreement to council with our convention for approval.
Second.
It's moved by Charlie Smythe, seconded by Mike Madigan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that passes. Next up is ordinance number 2014-08-080, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapter 12.5 to add a new Article 4, which is regarding relocation assistance for tenants. We'll have staff report, and then we'll take public input and have council discussion. Libby Tyler?
This was, came before the council last month, and there were some comments that have now been incorporated into the ordinance, some good suggestions on wording changes, and so these have been incorporated by city attorney and myself, and one of the suggestions from the Realtors Association was to limit the hotel motel reimbursements to a local average daily rate, and rather than trying to find an index, which is, be hard to determine, we'll actually be collecting that data each year as part of our hotel motel licensing, so our finance department will do that for us, and that will be the best way to identify the average. So we've attached to this little memo update, the revised ordinance, as well as a markup version, so you can see where the changes have been made. Any questions?
Eric?
So, it seems to me a really simple way to determine the average hotel rate would be, we get, we get a payment for hotel motel tax, and so we know what fraction of the expenditures that is, and we know what the occupancy is, so just divide the two numbers, it seems to me.
We'll be asking them for their ADR, because they, they track that, so that will become a survey question for the licensees.
Any other questions? Okay, we have two members of the public who wish to speak. Neil Malone from the Champaign County Association of Realtors. And we've been advised by the city legal department that you may state your name, but you're not required to give an address.
But I can if I'd like to, no.
But you certainly may if you'd like to.
Sure, you may if you wish.
Yes.
And you may indicate if you're representing.
All kinds of identity theft, no, I'm just joking. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, as always, it is a pleasure to spend a portion of my Monday evenings with such a fine group of folks. When we met last on this, I had really hoped that there would be some time and thought taken to do a more collaborative approach on this ordinance. Unfortunately, that was not really the case. I received this Thursday in kind of a, here's what we're doing Monday, sort of email. I was unfortunately up in Chicago for a statewide convention we were doing with our association, so I wasn't able to get it to my members until Friday, so I really have not heard back from a number of them, nor from our legal counsel from the revised edition, but just on a cursory, cursory reading, it's difficult to say, cursory reading, I can see that I still have some concerns with regard to the version presented tonight. As mentioned, there were a couple of our concerns that were addressed. One was the, the sort of open-ended situation with regard to hotel costs, however, unfortunately, there still exists a number of issues with this particular ordinance. One, there still is no due process in terms of contesting whether this was the fault of the landlord or, or the fault of the tenant. If you look at Section 12.5-46, there's nothing in there that says you can contest it, it's just you get a notice from the city saying that this is the case. Is it the case? It may be, it may not be, I don't know, and there's really not a process for determining that. Two, if you'll move down to Section 12.5-47, subsection D specifically, there still is no delineation or information with regard to what the cost of a physical move such as a moving company or rental of a moving van is. I don't know if that's a U-Haul that's delivered on the curb, or does that include a full-service moving company like Mayflower pulling a semi up and essentially moving everything to the next location. Further, isn't clear as to where that move terminates. If those, in the words of the ordinance, comparable accommodations, for example, if this is a student who is having, you know, who is, is not from the Champaign-Urbana area originally, and they want their stuff moved back to mom and dad's house, which is where they may be relocating to, and it's in the northern suburbs, is the landlord responsible for that moving cost? Again, not delineated in the issue. Further, there's still a number of ambiguous terms in this, and as you guys know, words mean something. I don't know, under section F, sub-F, if any tenant household is given less than 30 days notice in which to vacate a dwelling unit pursuant to the section, after reasonable efforts is unable to relocate directly to another habitable dwelling unit. I don't know what those reasonable efforts are, and then in the next sentence, it turns around and says, "The landlord shall be obligated to reimburse the tenant household for any and all costs." Any and all is a pretty broad interpretation of anything legal. Again, as you get down into Section 12.5-48, there doesn't seem to be much due process in that either, in that, the timing of the payment, if that were contested, whether it was in fact a landlord, an act of the landlord, for example, not an act of God, not an act of the tenant, specifically, it gives a timeframe in which the landlord must pay. We haven't really even established yet if the landlord is liable based on how it's set up on the front end.
You have one minute, Mr. Malone.
Wonderful. Again, I just have deep concerns with respect to that. Finally, one more point, as I am running out of time, if you look in Section 12.5-48, timing of payment, subsection F, in no more than one business day, following the presentment by the tenant household of invoices, bills, or paid receipts for the cost of a physical move, reconnection of utilities, and/or hotel motel stay, as the case may be, that doesn't, there's no approving those costs, there's no auditing those costs, that's just, I'm supposed to take, the landlord is supposed to take someone's word for it, that this large stack of bills should be paid for by that landlord. Again, I'm happy to work with the sponsors, I think we've had a very short timeframe, and again, I would, I would even host the meeting at our offices, I just don't think that this is ready to proceed. Thank you very much for your time and attention, I'm happy to answer any questions, based on the buzzer.
Bill?
Yeah, I think this was substantially provided to us about a month ago, and with a few changes, it's been brought back today. During that time, did you send any written comments to council members or to staff expressing these concerns?
I testified last meeting on some of my concerns, and the only one that was really addressed was that specifically negligence by the tenant also disqualified them, as did criminal behavior.
Okay, thanks, so no written comments?
I did share some written comments with, with Councilperson Madigan, but that was in advance of the initial hearing on the piece.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Any other questions for Mr. Malone? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next up is Esther Pat, representing the Champaign-Urbana Tenant Union.
Thank you, Esther Pat. I live at 706 South Kohler Avenue in Urbana, and I'm speaking on behalf of Champaign-Urbana Tenant Union. As, as Mr. Brown's question pointed out, this copy of this ordinance was sent to the Apartment Association, along with, and to the Tenant Union, and to a number of different people, the Housing Authority, and it was all copied on the initial memo at least a month ago, and I, and if anyone had any concerns about it, they've had that much time to communicate those concerns. We heard a few at the meeting, whatever that was, two weeks ago, and I think there's no reason to delay further. As far as a condemnation being a tenant's fault, I suppose that's not outside the realm of possibility, but when I think of all the times the cities have condemned properties, I don't know when there ever has been a case where they've condemned a property because of something that the tenant did to it, but I think that to hold all this up because a landlord should have a chance to have a hearing in court to determine whether or not the tenant was at fault before the landlord is responsible for relocating all the people who are living in the property, is just, it's not reasonable, it's not practical. I said this last week, I'll say it again, as far as what is the cost of a physical move, the cost of the physical move is whatever it takes to move the people, and it's not like there's, like that could be anywhere from $5 to $5 million. There are only so many movers in town, there, and whether a person hires a moving company or a U-Haul, if that's their cost to move, that's what the landlord's responsible for. Mainly, what this is about, and actually, I'm surprised that there, that there is opposition at all to this from the landlord sector, because this is something that will not affect most landlords, and it only affects the really, 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 really outrageously, offensively bad landlord. The landlord whose negligence caused property that people are living in to become unfit for human habitation, and the hardship imposed on people when they are condemned upon, is much greater than the hardship, the amount of hardship that this alleviates. I mean, this is, this is a bare bones minimum, as I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, this is provide, requiring the landlord to pay far less than many, many other states require, and other cities require, from Burlington, Vermont, to San Francisco, California, and Seattle, Washington, and the state of Massachusetts, and the state of New Jersey, and, and several cities in Texas, I mean, they, and they don't have, and you look at the language in those laws, they don't say, "Well, what is reasonable, we have to find reasonable." The word reasonable appears in many laws, including, for example, on the Damage Deposit Refund Act, which I'm dealing with a lot this time of year, a landlord can charge his or her reasonable costs for his or her own labor. There's no definition in the Illinois State Statute, 765 ILCS 710, defining reasonable, it's presumed that reasonable is what's considered reasonable, and if people want to argue about what is reasonable, if a landlord wants to, wants to do process and wants to argue about what you're requiring, they can go ahead and they can file their suit and try to get a court to require you to pay them back the money that they had to pay if they think that what you were doing, what you allowed for here was unreasonable. But again, if you look at it, it's so very simple. The tenant has to move probably immediately, or within a few days, because the landlord has done such a bad job of maintaining the property, the city finally condemned it, which the city rarely ever does, and the landlord's got to give back the tenant's money that they're already holding that has not yet been applied to rent for the time the tenant lived there, basically prepaid rent, the damaged deposit, they've got to pay the cost it's going to take for the tenant to move out of there to someplace else, they have to pay for the reconnection, and this provides for insufficient amount of hotel stay in many cases, but not more than two weeks in the hotel. As far as the tenant making a reasonable effort to find a place, I'm sorry, but I'm, I'm almost offended by the challenge that, that the tenant should have to prove to you that their effort was really reasonable, and it's, think it through, logic. If, if the law says 14 days max in a hotel, why wouldn't the tenant make a diligent effort to find a place to live? Because if they don't find the place to live, after 14 days, they have no place to live and no money compensating them. So this really is extraordinarily reasonable to the landlord, it is adequate for a lot of tenants for a lot of situations, it will be harmful to, or insufficient for some people in some situations, so it really, as always, is a compromise between what would really be good for the tenant and, and what is done by laws to try to accommodate landlords, but I think of all the places and all the times to try to accommodate the landlord. When the landlord we're talking about is someone who's bad, 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 and has caused, and has sucked up a lot of city resources and caused a lot of people suffering for probably months, if you condemned it, then I think that, I really just think you should proceed and pass this thing already, so we don't end up with another situation where there is a condemnation before you've got a law in place that states what the landlord's responsibilities are to relocate the tenants, because it really is their responsibility, and they shouldn't all have to each end up being homeless, and, or if they have the resources, hire their own lawyer to sue and get compensation eight months later. This is just about basic humanitarian concern by city officials for the welfare of people who risk becoming homeless because their landlord didn't maintain the property to the very bare minimum it takes to avoid condemnation. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Pat? Mayor?
You've looked at a lot of ordinances from other cities, does any, we're sort of assuming that the person's going to move pretty close to where they were, so does any other city say you have to be within 25 miles, or 50 miles, or 250 miles, or something like that? It seems kind of unusual.
That seems, that seems strange to me, but if you, I mean, I wouldn't suggest you put miles in.
Well, I'm just asking if you've ever, ever seen that aspect addressed.
No, I don't actually remember, I don't remember ever seeing that, no. I mean, other than, other than the one, and I didn't look up which one it was, and I think it's, it's in Austin, Texas, but one of the ones that, that said, or it was San Francisco, one of them that was actually, the burden was on the city to ensure that the people, that they could get in the same school district, if, you know, if they chose, or the same neighborhood, but I don't remember seeing anything about that, although if you, if you're thinking of toying with this more and addressing that issue, you should say something like, you know, within Champaign County, or within the community, don't start with numbers of miles, because, or that has to be Urbana, because Urbana is still rather small, and, you know, a lot of people just go back and forth between Champaign and Urbana, or Urbana and outside Urbana city limits, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Eric?
So, a question that I would have for either of you to address. For history of existing ordinances like this in other cities, is there a history of issues arising after the passage of the ordinances that caused the ordinances to be revised?
I wouldn't know that much detail, I just know I've seen the laws. The most detail that I heard about, about the actual use of any ordinance was actually from your chief of staff, who talked to the folks in Seattle, or someone in Seattle, and what Mr. Monson told me, and he told me personally, was that, was that the official there said that the fact that if the landlord doesn't pay, the city's going to pay, and the landlord's going to have to pay the city plus fines, does a great job of getting the landlords to pay. Which is what we thought was the intention of this, and that's what's good. As far as it being changed, or changes, I don't know, but if you want to make changes, I'd be happy to provide you with copies of all those laws again, and you can see, and you can see how much more other governments have required in these situations than what you're requiring.
Yeah, I guess I was only-
There are actually remarkably few municipalities or just jurisdictions that provide this. I mean, literally, probably both hands you could count them on. We would be the only one in the state of Illinois. So I don't have a lot of experience with dealing with it specifically in Illinois, because no one else has it. However, I can, again, I'm more than happy to reach out, I have a network of colleagues nationwide, and I can be happy to reach out on that topic. Again, I didn't get the initial notification of this, I got this two weeks ago, so it's not like I've been dragging my feet for a month. This is, I was not included in the initial disbursement, so I wanted to make that clear as well.
The thing that I was fishing for with that question was whether, you know, anything troublesome had-
Right, oh, I understand that, but I'm just saying, that I wouldn't know.
But I guess we don't, we don't have, neither of you has information about that at this point.
Well, that's a, as far as other, other states, or the state, the state laws and the municipal laws that exist around, I have, you know, I have seen the law that was on the books at the time that I asked about it, which was probably some two years ago, but as far as the legislative history or anything like that, I was not involved in the passage of any of those. When the issue came up here, I posted a request to a listserv of, actually, legal aid attorneys in the country, saying, "Has anybody got relocation ordinance in your municipality?" And got responses back, actually, right away from people in Massachusetts and New Jersey saying, "Oh, it's a state law here," and sending me copies of the state laws, and then various people started popping up with the different cities, with Seattle and San Francisco, and Burlington, Vermont, and again, I can't remember where it was, in Texas. So there are a number of different places that happened. But, yeah, if, this would be the first one, and Illinois doesn't surprise me, about, oh, was it seven years ago? Yeah, about seven years ago, State Representative Naomi Jacobson co-sponsored legislation in the Illinois House to make a provision like this, a state law, and it also provided for more, but it was, it was that basically if the place was condemned, that the landlord had to pay the tenant three times the monthly rent, pay each tenant three times the monthly rent, and if they didn't, that the city would have to pay that amount to each tenant, and then the city could recover that from the landlord. And that was actually what, and that legislation, thanks to the very strong real estate lobby in Illinois, did not succeed, but it was that legislation that prompted the initial approach to the city to request that you pass your own city ordinance to do that.
And I don't want to get Councilman Jacobson in trouble at home. Far be it from doing along those lines, but again, I would be happy, I have a network of folks who do my job in all cities and states in the country. I'd be more than happy to go back and find out some more legislative history. Again, this is that collaborative process I talked about last time, that if I'm brought in into these discussions, I'm more than happy to be a resource. I just, again, fairly late inclusion, and, you know, my friend who runs the Washington Association of Realtors, I'd be happy to talk to him about Seattle. I have very good contacts with the Texas Association, would love to enlighten me about Austin. Again, I'm happy to be a resource, I just don't think that this particular one is soup yet, but thank you.
Libby?
Yes, as Ms. Pat mentioned, we did do some survey work, and Mike Monson called a number of municipalities and did some background research, and from my understanding from his notes and his work, none of them said, "Well, this was, didn't work," and, you know, they all seemed to make sense for those communities. Is that, you know, that's what you reported?
Yeah, there were a handful of communities that we found, like Seattle, Cincinnati, I think Oakland, San Francisco. Washington may have had a state law, as I recall, I could be wrong on that, but, and most of these cities actually provided compensation in advance, whereas this ordinance is not doing that.
Charlie?
Mike, just to continue that, did any of them limit moving expenses or such to the greater community in some fashion?
Not that I recall, and not, I don't recall specifically researching that particular issue, but that doesn't ring a bell.
Did you? Mike?
So, along the line of the moving expense limitation, then, what is to keep a person from someone who has limited means, who has maybe rented a U-Haul before, or used family to help? What is precluding them from renting a $1,500 semi and three staff to move their belongings? Are we saying that that's, are we going to allow? Okay.
No, no, I wouldn't say absolutely nothing. What prohibits is, if the landlord doesn't want to pay it, the landlord's not going to pay, and then it's up to the city to enforce it. And if the city officials think it's ridiculous, the city officials will say no. And that's, that's your ultimate protection. But I'll tell you, if someone needed a huge semi and three staff to move, if they were being moved out of a big enough place that that's what they needed, then unless, unless there, you can find some cheaper way for them to do it, then, I mean, I guess it's meant to be by semi, but if someone, if someone needs a 22-foot truck, and three strong people to load up all their stuff, and they can fill that truck, then that's what they should get, is a 22-foot truck, and if someone can fit it all in a little U-Haul, then that's what they should get, is the little U-Haul.
I'm not questioning that at all, Esther, but what I'm asking you is, in the ordinance you helped draft, where is the limitation?
Again, I did not help draft it, I gave my input. And I, and I want to say, and by the way, I don't know that it's protocol for you to send ordinances to lobbyists with state organizations for their input, but the ordinance was sent to the apartment, I forgot what they call themselves now, the Central Illinois Apartment Professionals Association, at the exact same time as it was sent to me, and that was at least a month ago, so this isn't, you know, I mean, if they want a delay, obviously they want a delay because they don't want this thing to pass, but there has, there's certainly been plenty of opportunity for input. But as far as, how does this work, and it works the way every single city ordinance works, is that you folks, well, not you folks, but your staff enforce this. And what it has, as far as the penalties, or say if the landlord doesn't do it, if the landlord fails to timely complete the payments identified in this section, that's, I'm looking at 12.549, blah, 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 the city may assess an ordinance violation fine of up to $750 per day for each day the landlord has failed to make such payments. So, things that can happen are, the city can choose not to assess the fine, because they don't think it's, it was unreasonable for the landlord not to pay it. The city could actually choose not to assess the fine, even if the landlord was terribly unreasonable, because we've had issues like that around here. And the city can also issue the fine, and the landlord can appeal the fine under your process for appealing fines, and the city can reverse the fine. And actually, I had a client who had that same, or was involved in a case that had that experience like that, where a landlord was given a second notice on a, on co-violations of not being corrected, and was fined by the city, and he appealed it, and the city took away the fine. So, as far as the protection here, nothing here is allowing you to go into the landlord's bank account and take the money out. This law is landlord's supposed to pay, if landlord doesn't pay, you can fine them.
I'd like to get back to my question, actually.
But no, that's the answer to your question, wait, excuse me, that is the answer to your question, is what stops the landlord from being forced to pay unreasonable amounts?
That was not my question, Esther, so can I get back to my question?
Sure, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you.
Sure.
I appreciate it. My question was, what in here gives city, the city staff, or anyone with the city, the authority to be the arbiter of what a tenant hires?
12.5-49 is the answer. And 12.5, well, yeah, 12.5-49, that's what gives it to them.
I would argue that's the exact opposite.
I see language about a landlord failing to timely complete payments in that section.
Right, right, so if the landlord doesn't pay the money, although, you're saying, you're saying if the landlord pays too much?
No, what I'm saying is if a tenant, who has an efficiency apartment that the landlord furnished, and the person has a suitcase and a few belongings, what stops them from renting a Mayflower semi, just to punish the landlord?
You mean, what stops the landlord from being required to pay them? Nothing stops them from jumping out the window and killing themselves either, but it's not a requirement in the ordinance.
This is just totally an unproductive conversation right now. Here's the question I'm asking you. Here is the question I'm asking you.
Maybe you should direct that question towards staff.
Yeah, anyone, anyone can answer. What I'm asking is, what prevents a tenant from being punitive against the landlord in this situation by running up expenses? I don't see anything in here where the city staff can be the arbiter of what is appropriate.
Ma'am, are you waiting for staff anyway?
Go right ahead.
Well, no, Libby was going to answer that, go ahead.
Well, you know, I think that we were with the city attorney, assuming, you know, reasonable actions, and that there wouldn't be gross violations of it. I think an alternative would be to put in place cost limits, and the problem with those is that they get out of date and they need to be proven, so, like with many ordinances, I think we drafted it in the general, and with the sense that people would comply honorably, and if not, that we would have other mechanisms to address it at that time. And I, Mr. Simon really did do the bulk of the legal work on this, or all the legal work, and a awful lot of the drafting. I don't know how he would respond to that, I don't know if Mr. Borman has a similar perspective on some of these hypotheticals and things that maybe weren't considered completely in the drafting.
I'm afraid I didn't participate in this at all.
Yes, do you have a comment, Mr. Malone?
Mike, not only does it not, not only is the answer zero, that it's completely open-ended, and it was, I agree with Libby that it was very openly drafted, I would argue overly openly drafted. Not only does it not prevent it, it actually encourages, because the landlord now is facing a $750 per day as a separate occurring violation, every day, they're, it's 750. So they've got the gun to their head of that, of that increasing fine, that they, you know, if it's, if it's a $1,000 move and a $200 move, it takes two days to pick up that difference by just piling the fines on top. I would say it is not only not a limit on, it is an encouragement to be punitive, because I think those fines are pretty aggressive for, you know, again, and back to my original point, that there's no mechanism on the front end as to why, you know, when the clock starts. I mean, it's three day or one day you have to pay, and every day you don't, it's $750. I mean, this, this is what I'm talking about, this really needs further consideration before-
A question for counsel, what would the landlord's due process be in this situation under this three-day and one-day mandatory payment? Is it fork over the money and then try to go to court to undo it, or, that just seems to me to be backwards?
I think that's correct, the landlord, the landlord can choose to comply with the ordinance, and after he's, he or she has complied with the ordinance, could seek judicial review of the ordinance. Or landlord doesn't pay, and then the city, then it's up to the city to decide whether to pursue the landlord. And if the city pursues the landlord, the landlord can obviously defend him or herself.
I have another question about refund of security deposit. This says refund of any security deposit, yet it doesn't, it doesn't flesh that out at all either. What if, what if the landlord discovers extensive damage internal to the, to the unit, but is forced by the city to pay over whatever's on the books at the time, and there's no time to flesh out if there is damage owed the landlord from the tenant?
Well, I'm sorry, you want to say exactly?
Again, it is completely open, and there's no room for interpretation. It says refund of the entire security deposit.
Staff has a comment?
Well, I was just going to note that the lease would still be in place, and any protections for the security deposit would be in place, and-
But the, this is compelling, the city is compelling the payment of the security deposit post haste.
That's right.
So there's no time.
Point of order. I would like the chair to please ask the two speakers to take, wait for their spot in here, and quit interrupting, and quit interjecting comments while others are speaking. Thank you, Mr. Malone. You in particular are causing me great grief up here.
I would never want to do that.
Thank you. Please be quiet, then.
I can answer the question.
So-
Mike, you had a question?
Well, yeah, I mean, I'll reiterate my question, I just, I don't, I don't, I don't see how this maybe wouldn't conflict with state law. A landlord has rights with regard to the security deposit under state law, just as a tenant does. And the city is now compelling the payment of the security deposit without consideration to whether or not there might be damage internal to the unit subsequent, or in concurrent timeframe as this condemnation.
The landlord's obligation-
This is the staff's-
Wow.
Oh, I thought that was a question for us, I'm sorry.
Well, again, I would, I would say that the lease is still in force, and if there were damages, and the landlord would still be able to seek those deductions from the deposit. And you're right, it would be a very time-intensive process, but nothing in here should interfere with those protections in the lease, in terms of damage and deposit. That's my reading of it.
It would be your opinion, then, that this language would not put the city in some kind of a position superior to state law, in that the landlord would still have rights, and the landlord could, without being subject to a city penalty, exercise his rights to try to withhold a portion of a security deposit?
That, that was the intent, that we would still honor that.
Okay.
Not trying to-
I'm fine with that, it's just-
Interject or game or anything, it's-
Not, you know what, the only reason I'm saying that is because it's not, it's not fleshed out in writing, but if we have this conversation, then that's memorialized, and that's an important thing, so.
Any other questions or comments for staff? Charlie?
If we're done asking questions of Esther and Mr. Malone, then I have a question for Libby.
I think we're finished.
Okay, I guess we're moving into council discussion.
So you're done with the two of us?
Yes, for now.
Sometimes ask me, but the question that you got, he got to answer, that I didn't.
Charlie?
Question for Libby, it seems to me that the basic starting point of this policy is Article 4, relocation assistance for tenants, in the very first sentence of Section 12.546, which I think is Esther's main point here. If the city provides a landlord with written notice that a rental property or any dwelling unit located therein will be designated as unlawful to occupy due to conditions created by the landlord that violate one or more applicable codes, statutes, or ordinance, the landlord shall pay relocation assistance to every displaced tenant household as provided for in Sections 12, 547, and 548. And it strikes me that, you know, this is an extremely rare situation. There's a long process that staff goes through to get to this point. All the judicial issues that we've been concerned about get fleshed out in getting here, and that every time we get in a situation, which happens, you know, once every five years or something, where there's some kind of, in the community, some kind of condemnation, you know, the Ramos properties several years ago, and before that, there was another set, we had our own example a couple of years ago in the South Philo District area, and we always worry about relocating those tenants. And it strikes me that there's a history, you know, that we go through to get to this point. So if you want to comment on that, you know, what are the steps, you know, why, why would we end up with this, and why do we need this?
You're right, usually there's a long process that leads up to it. There have been some emergency situations as well. There have been some emergency situations as well, and I think in our first memoranda, we talked about over the last, um, seven years, our coordinated efforts with other jurisdictions to provide tenant relocation assistance. There have been a number of cases in Urbana, and it's very hard to witness, and the assistance that the city has been able to provide has been relatively minimal, just a few days in a hotel. And this would provide for some additional protections in those cases. But they are limited to essentially these willful types of cases where the conditions at the property have deteriorated such, or, um, one that's come up a few times would be non-payment of utilities for apartments or condominiums. That is something that can result very quickly in units not being habitable. Um, could be examples of fires or things of this nature. So some, oftentimes they build up, and you know, and there's plenty, plenty of warning, but occasionally there are very quick, quick emergencies that result. And the landlords that take care of tenants, take care of their properties, this is likely not to happen, but if it was, it's, it's just recognizing that they will provide that relocation assistance. It's supposed to be relocation assistance, like we've been dealing with another property. It's not a handout, it's not a payoff. It's bona fide relocation to get a similar unit or an equivalent unit. So the moving, that's appropriate. The short-term hotel, if the new lease in the new place doesn't start, to get your deposit back, what's owed to you by the lease, to get that, um, you know, the funds available so you can actually not be homeless and, and get a new place to live. So that's the intent here. It's these unusual cases. It's not meant to be an intermediary between landlords and tenants in some way, um, just to provide that safety net. This particular ordinance that we brought forward puts the onus on the landlord as the cause of the circumstance, presumed cause of the circumstance. There are other cities that we had interviewed where they take it a step forward further than that, and they actually provide the, outlay the funds, and then try to get reimbursement from the landlords. We wanted something simpler, something that we felt people wouldn't, wouldn't game and exaggerate and take advantage of on either side. And so that's why it's, it's very, fairly straightforward, simple ordinance. I'm sure that there's always language that can be improved and provisions that can be added, and we're happy to do that, do more research, do more, um, you know, tweaking of the language. We can, oftentimes, an ordinance might be adopted, and then we bring it back, you know, so many months later, we've had a chance to use it, and you'll see oftentimes many amendments to improve language or improve administration. I did get some great questions that I think will be things that, as we administer the ordinance, it actually becomes like a program we'll learn from, and we have some latitude as staff in administering these ordinances and setting up programs, and we can certainly adjust. We can do that administratively, and we can bring it back for amendments or review or potentially repeal.
And then following up on that, that's where my next question was going. Um, I could see incorporating some of the language of, of, um, you know, that, that the lease provisions still apply in some fashion here, you know, particularly with, uh, in Section 12, 547. Uh, it might be good to make reference to the lease requirements, um, because that goes both ways, you know. There are lease requirements that, where the landlord is, has to provide for assistance anyway. And then, um, and that's something Mr. Simon could comment on. Uh, and then likewise, um, I'd be curious if other communities have a, a, a move or a relocation within the greater community. Uh, if it's somehow implied in these things, to me, that is a reasonable thing to add to this. Uh, and, and so those two particular items, uh, I think could be added easily by next week if, if we wanted to move forward tonight, which I do.
Bill?
A couple of possibilities. Just to comment on what Charlie said about, um, this and, and what Michael pointed out about the security deposit. If you, you're forced to move right away, you don't get a chance to clean, so you shouldn't really be charged for cleaning. So there's things like that that might come up that, um, you know, where the landlord might want to deduct something for cleaning an oven, but if he's gonna redo the whole apartment, and you have to move out the next day, you don't get a chance to clean the oven. So there could be problems with that. But I think there are a couple of things about leaving the cost of the move open-ended that we should probably address to strengthen the ordinance. And I, um, I think there's probably a legal definition of reasonable. We've used it a lot. So why can't we just say the reasonable and necessary cost of the physical move? And then farther down, the reasonable cost, which a tenant household encourages me to get into staying at the area hotel. And then at least if, um, you know, if there's questions, it's not open-ended, and it's, and if it's challenged in court, then they can say, well, is this reasonable or not? So that would be my suggestion.
Any other comments? Eric?
So I've, I've, you know, tried to listen to both sides of this discussion with an open mind, and I, I understand the, the concerns of representative of the apartments. But the thing that I keep coming back to is that this ordinance is only triggered after an apartment, after the living unit is condemned. And typically what that means is that the resident has gone through some really bad times up to that point. And this is only a very tiny fraction. It's an important fraction, it's an important issue, but it's actually a tiny fraction of the units. And I think what we're doing here, what I, what I'm hearing is that we're balancing what we know are very real difficulties for the tenants against hypothetical, uh, difficulties for the landlords, for a landlord who has already, um, has already created, will have created a, a really bad situation. So I'm inclined to, well, I'm inclined, I'm strongly inclined. I will vote for, uh, for moving this forward for approval. I'm, I'm certainly open to some way to, uh, you know, reasonably cap the moving costs, although I doubt that that would emerge as a problem, but we could, we could foreclose it. Um, but I think it is a, I think it is a reasonable document as it is, and, uh, who knows? Maybe this will be a strong enough disincentive that we're not going to see another condemnation for another decade, and that would be absolutely great.
Any other council comments, questions? Is, is there a motion? Charlie?
I move to send this to council without a recommendation, pending improvement of language between now and next week.
Second?
For tonight's suggestions.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. It goes to council for further work. Next up is ordinance number 2014-09-083, ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate, 301 East Thompson. And I assume we can talk about 303 East Thompson as well. Kelly?
Before you, our two ordinances authorizing the sale of two lots, 301 Thompson and 303 East Thompson, to Habitat for Humanity. Um, this property was purchased with our Community Development Block Grant Property Acquisition Demolition Funds, and we are using carryover fund to demolish the former church on the site before these lots are transferred to Habitat. Demolition should be completed by the end of September in order for Habitat to begin their construction before November 1st. At its May 29th, 2014 regular meeting of the Community Development Commission, the commission voted unanimously, unanimously to recommend approval of the ordinances. So staff in the, in the CDC recommend approval of the conveyance of these properties to Habitat. Any questions?
Bill?
I just noticed an inconsistency in the description of the real estate on the contract of sale. It says Lot 22 for, um, 303, I think it was. And for 303, someplace else, it said Lot 21. So I think whichever one is right, this needs to be there next week.
Yes.
Lot 20 is right, I guess, for 301, but for 303, they were two different. Where it was described, one, in one place it said Lot 21, and the other place it said Lot 22. So.
Okay, well, I'll make sure to. And you all should have received the revised ordinances based on the recommendations of City Legal Department. No further discussion? Is there a motion on ordinance 2014-09-083? Charlie?
Move to send to council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
Moved by Charlie Smythe, seconded by Eric Jacobson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. Charlie?
I move ordinance number 2014-984, ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate, 303 East Thompson.
Second.
Moved by Charlie Smythe, seconded by Eric Jacobson. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That passes. Next up is Consolidated Social Service Funding Pool, CDBG Subrecipient Agreements for Fiscal Year 2014-15. We have two resolutions, uh, 2014-09-045R, which is a resolution approving Community Development Block Grant Agreement with Community Elements, the Roundhouse Youth Shelter, and Resolution Number 2014-09-046R, which is approving a, a block grant agreement with the Courage Connection. I do have one member of the public who wished to speak on this topic, so we'll do that. Oh, that's not the member of the public who's, did you fill out a form?
Well, actually, she, I was gonna introduce her. She is the, um, Isak Griffiths. She's the new executive director for Courage Connection.
We'll have the staff report first.
But I'll, I'll do my staff report.
You're a member of the Republican, too.
Yes.
A very important member.
My name is Isak Griffiths, and I'm the new executive director of Courage Connection. And I wanted to thank you just for, for considering this. It's really an honor to be part of an organization that has a huge legacy, both in the community and the state. Illinois was the first state that enacted law that made domestic violence explicitly legal. And of course, here in Urbana, we had the very first shelter for women who are victims of domestic violence. Uh, as you probably know, we provide crisis management, counseling, court advocacy, as well as education in parenting, financial management, as well as an onsite early head start program. Job training and professional skills development through the Connections Store in Lincoln Square, permanent low-cost housing, as well as tenant-based rental assistance in the community. We provide safety and support for women and women with children who are homeless, men and women who are victims of domestic violence, and women coming out of the Department of Corrections. We could not do it without your faith and support, and so it, it's really an honor to be here. And again, thank you for your support and for your faith in what we do.
Thank you. Any questions?
Good luck in the new position.
Thank you.
Uh, any further comments, Kelly?
No, I was just gonna say that there was two rooms that are before you. One is with Community Elements and one with Courage Connection. And this is for funding through the Consolidated Social Service Funding Pool, and these, this agency, as well as the other, were selected to receive CDBG public service funds because they met the priorities that were set by the CDC Commission at its March 25th meeting. And as you can see in the memo, it lists what the priorities were and how the agencies met those priorities. So staff is, and the Community Development Commission recommend that the city council approve the resolutions.
I do have another member of the public who wishes to speak, Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood. A couple of different things. One is they want to remind us that they are continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem, but they also, Dr. Underwood also would like to speak on the Community Elements grant. And it looks like Harvey Street is in there, too.
And I just wait for the Harvey, uh, at that time.
Well, you'll get five minutes total for comments.
So I wait till the Harvey, because I got the clarification I needed for this one.
Okay, great. Thank you. Charlie?
I move to send both these resolutions, uh, 945R and 46R to council with recommendation for approval.
Well, if we're going to do that in omnibus fashion.
Do one at a time, okay.
Yeah, so it doesn't save us any time.
I thought in committee, we could do that without, I thought the, Kurt, we could, can we send both of them in committee without going through the whole? It's, at council, we have to do the omnibus, right? Yeah, he's signing yes. Okay, so I can send both of these.
Oh, you can just lump them all together. Okay.
I move to send both of these to council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Smythe, seconded by Mr. Jacobson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? They pass. Next up is ordinance number 2014-09-085, ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, uh, fiscal year 1415. It's the capital improvement donations for the Arbor program. Mike Brunt from Public Works.
Good evening. What this ordinance is for is to ask for approval to spend money that we raised last fiscal year in various programs. So our Legacy Tree donations, we have greenscapes donations, damage to city trees, and the Arbor's tree planting program, cooperative tree planting program. All those funds were remaining in last fiscal years, and we're asking approval to transfer those over for expenditures this year.
Any questions for Mike?
I move to send this to council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
Motion by Charlie Smythe, seconded by Mike Madigan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Next up is ordinance number 2014-09-086, which, and the next three ordinances actually all come from the Traffic Commission. Ordinance 2014, that's 09-087, and ordinance 2014-09-088. And you should have a revised memorandum for item number 12. Bill Gray?
Thank you. At last month's Traffic Commission meeting, these items, 11, 12, and 13, were discussed. The minutes from that meeting is in the council packet for tonight. Uh, thank you for referencing the revised ordinance. Um, perhaps I'll go to that particular item first. On Harvey Street, there was, um, resident came to the meeting and expressed there's been repeat blockage of their driveway at the dead end of North Harvey Street. For several years, this has been going on, and we've been, um, trying to think through what would work best for this situation. Um, frequently, users of the King Park, um, area and shelter will take their belongings, chairs, picnic materials, what have you, park at the end, and it's been a loading zone for many years. And unfortunately, people will park there for a long time, or multiple vehicles will park there and block driveways, keeping people from exiting the driveway. It's been enforced, but it's a difficult enforcement situation because of the fact it's a loading zone. Commit, Traffic Commission had a lengthy discussion on this matter with a variety of people in the room, interested parties in the room. Um, the best, um, decision that we came up with was with you, before you tonight. Uh, we think that, um, it can be effective, um, in preventing blockage of driveways in the future, and at the same time, effectively allowing people to go to the end of the block and unload their vehicle to take items to, um, King Park, or conversely, to remove when they leave, to have a short walk, if you will, to that area, and then park their car in a legal parking area. So what we're doing is removing the loading zone area, and we're changing that to a no parking anytime. There are exhibits in the handout that give the specifics as to where that no parking would be. And, um, the revised ordinance is a further clarification of what action is necessary or suggested by council. Um, so there's. So there's a little bit of wordsmithing here in the revised version, but effectively, it means the same thing in that we would be creating a no parking... No parking at all times at this location. So I'll hold off on the next two items and wait for discussion of these two items. I don't know if Chairman...
Any questions?
Traffic Commission Madigan wants to add to it. I know there's a lot of discussion on it, and I kind of cut through the quick of the discussion, so.
No, I think you boiled it down really well. Some lovely ladies who live right there regularly have their driveway blocked, and that, I learned what a hammerhead is. And this is a hammerhead. It's meant basically to be a turnaround for things like emergency vehicles. And I have on two occasions since the Traffic Commission meeting, driven down Lincoln and seen activity at the pavilion and driven down Harvey Street, and both times, one, there was one very large truck parked there. Nobody around. I mean, there were a lot of people at the pavilion, and then the other time, there were two, and her driveway was partially blocked both times. So I can definitely see the problem from the residents' perspective. It's definitely a difficult issue because the Park District has this pavilion there and no real good access to it. But they don't seem like they're interested in paving any of the park to accommodate that. So really, I think it is in the city's best interest at this point to post this as a no parking anytime.
Charlie?
So a question for both Mike and Bill. Is there anything that would preclude the Park District from, say, extending the hammerhead and creating a little bit of a parking, a loading zone of their own so that it's... I think the problem is, is that driveways here are so close to the, to that hammerhead that they get easily blocked because they're right there on the edge of the property line up against the park. So it seems like the Park District could just put something right, you know, create its own loading zone off of the hammerhead.
And that was pretty much the universal opinion of the folks from the city who were there, but the Park District cited cost taking green space. They would have to relocate a bike path, a bike and walking path, actually. But, so there would be cost to the Park District, and they were really not interested in any kind of remedy that would require additional hard surface on the park.
Bill?
Well, it seems like a no parking zone would basically have the same effect as what the intent of the loading zone was, that people would still be able to unload there as long as they were present and come back to their cars. So I think it's probably a reasonable solution.
I just had one more comment, too, you know, from the police department's perspective. This is a bit of a hassle because they do get calls, and then the way that the zone is marked now, a police officer actually would have to sit there and wait the 10 minutes in order to be able to enforce or to be able to write a ticket. If it's a no parking anytime, the minute the officer is there, he can, he can make the vehicle move.
Any other council questions for staff? Dr. Underwood, is this where you wanted to comment? And again, a reminder, you're not required to state your address.
Yeah, Evelyn Underwood. Yeah, I was concerned about what's happening with the neighbors, the people that live there. Have they been consulted? Are they involved in this? Do they know about it? And I haven't done my homework yet, and I know this is the meeting as a whole, before y'all vote, on what's gonna happen. Have they been included in this, the people that live there? Because I know what happened to us, and there's some things going on. Well, anyway, I don't want to get into that. But have the people that live there been involved in this, the people on the street? Are they gonna know about what happened? Have they been involved in this city?
Mike?
Yes, ma'am. They actually came to the Traffic Commission, and they're urging us to do this.
Oh, they, the people?
Yes, ma'am.
All the people, not the Westfield, I mean, Westfield, did he come? Now, I know Westfield lived there, but there are some other people that live there, too.
The lady who lives on the north end of the street, on the west side.
Okay. But just one person, but do all the people know who's gonna be involved? Because if they're... Because I know some things that happened to us, and a lot of people didn't know what was going on. I just want to know, and if the, do the Park District need to do something, or the city? You know, but the people that live there, do they know what's gonna happen in their neighborhood? They not gonna be at a park or things that need... I haven't done all of my homework.
Well, they are not gonna be...
But I was just concerned if there's no parking, you know, and what's going on. I haven't done my homework. But I was just concerned because of what happened to us.
There will still be parking down the street. Okay, so there will still be parking down the street. This is just, this is just adjacent to the two lots right next to King Park. And both of the ladies who live on each side of that street, whose driveways are the ones being blocked, are urging the city to do this. So basically, what this will mean is that residents who, folks who want to use the King Park Pavilion and park near it can park on down Harvey Street, as long as they're not blocking driveways and they're in the legal area. So yeah, the folks on Harvey Street are well aware of what's going on here, and in fact, they're asking for this.
Okay. Because I know Mr. W. lived there, right there. And, okay. And there are other people. Okay, thank you. I'm nosy, because it was so hurtful for what happened to us, and we didn't know this was gonna be, and some people don't understand. So thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a... We can take all three of these in omnibus fashion? Bill?
Just one more question. When we make a change like that, do we sometimes phase in enforcement as far as giving warning tickets or something for a while until people get used to the signs? Because I imagine if you're used to going there on a regular basis, you won't even read the signs unless it's real obvious.
Perhaps.
Anybody, does anybody know?
My recollection from the Traffic Commission meeting, when the officer was there talking about this, was that, yes, they would not, you know, just go right in and start writing tickets. It would be more of an education process. But what it does is allow the officer to ask for the vehicle to be moved immediately instead of timing it. So, so yeah, I mean, they're, they have no intention of being heavy-handed about it. I think they just want to make sure that driveways aren't blocked and they get people to move. Okay, thanks.
I'll entertain a motion. Charlie?
Bill was gonna talk about, well, that we have...
We can do all three together. Do you want to talk about the others?
11 and 12, yeah, I move 11, yeah, I move ordinance 986 and 2014-987 to council with recommendations for approval.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Charlie Smythe, seconded by Eric. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? Okay, those are passed. So last up is ordinance 2014-09-088. Bill?
Okay. This is actually two locations where we're talking about parking meters now. The first is Clark Street, and it's Clark Street between Kohler and Bucie. Recently, apartments have been torn down as part of the St. Patrick's Church expansion and parking lot expansion, and the previous need for free unmetered parking in front of those units is no longer there. Secondly, feedback from the area, we're finding if the meters that were existing on Kohler and Clark Street, if they were longer term than two hour, they might be used more off, used more than the current situation for folks at work or have longer procedures, or whatever the case may be. And then lastly, it makes sense to then meter that entire block so that people don't merely park past the four metered spaces on Clark and park in the free area. So we want to meter that whole block to Bucie. We believe that the usage will pick up from what we're hearing and speaking with folks. So that is one item. And then staff administration would be changing and letting, informing you we would change the two-hour current zone to a 10-hour zone. The second item for your consideration is what we call Lot 10A North. This is the lot immediately north, adjacent to the Great Impasta and the yoga business in Lincoln Square Village. And what we have found through surveillance and other means is that many people that park in that free parking area, in fact, don't necessarily go to the Lincoln Square Village businesses, but go to the north, to the courthouse, and just merely circumvent paying either in the deck or in the courthouse property. So in working with the Lincoln Square management and the management with those businesses, they have come to agree, and our Lincoln Square Village parking agreement allows us to meter this lot in order to not have folks that don't necessarily park there and use Lincoln Square Village businesses, but use other, go elsewhere. For those who do park in this, if this is to be approved, metered area, we would set up a validation arrangement so that if, let's for example, you had lunch or dinner, although dinner would be parking past the times of lunch, you know, Grand Impasta, and you would happen to get a ticket, you can merely put your receipt affixed to the ticket into the meter box or here or what have you, and not have to pay the ticket. So it'd be a fairly simple process, as long as the dates match, of course, so. So the recommendation is to Clark Street, add meters on the balance of the block to Bucie. The second recommendation is to convert the free parking to our free to a metered lot in Lot 10A North.
Questions for staff? Motion? Charlie?
Well, yeah, a question for Bill real quickly. I didn't follow the validation thing, and that's the one thing I had a question about. It says, "A validation system is being developed for patrons purchasing goods and services from Lincoln Square businesses." So people are just gonna park there, get a ticket, and, and put it in the... It seems...
They would have to have some evidence that they were adding Lincoln Square.
Yeah, so how are people gonna know that? They're gonna come to their car, they're, they're gonna, you know, if I, if I come there, I'm gonna plug the meter, not realizing that I can get, that I get free parking if I'm going in to go shopping. So, you know, our, our meters don't use tokens anymore, so I don't, you know, they can't go into, say, Great Impasta and get some tokens from the owners. So this seems like an odd, odd way to run it. Are we gonna put signs on there that say, you know, you know, you park here for free if you get a ticket, put your receipt in there? I mean, are we gonna sign it so that people know what to do? Otherwise, I think we're gonna have a lot of angry people.
Let me try to get you an answer this week on that question. I know there's been discussion with parking enforcement and finance folks as to how that validation would work. I don't have all those details.
Yeah, I just know that people get very angry when they get a parking ticket or when they should, you know, when they realize they could have had free parking for going there. I know that a number of businesses on Main Street, for example, will validate your parking in the deck, and people don't know about it, you know? And so it seems like we need to publicize that a bit better.
Let me get that information to you this week.
Eric?
So what other, I guess, well, there are probably a few people like this, but I often park in that lot when I go to Charter Fitness. And I don't get a receipt because I just swipe, I just swipe my little thing. So I suppose there that the, that I guess we'd have to ask the business, that business to be able to give people little slips or something that says, yeah, they were really there.
Again, I'll have to try to further give you a better answer.
Any other comments? Charlie?
I'm all for putting meters and giving 10 hours on Clark Street. The other one, I'm waiting to see an answer, but I think we can send this, I recommend sending this to council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
Moved by Charlie Smythe, seconded by Councilman Jacobson. Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, last item on the agenda is ordinance number 2014-09-089, which is an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for the Windsor Road Construction Observation Staff Overtime. Bill Gray.
Thank you. As you know, Windsor Road construction work has begun. We've learned of the contractor's schedule a few weeks ago now, and it was evident to us that in order to pay, properly compensate staff, they're gonna have to work longer hours in a 40-hour work week or an eight-hour day. So typically, in the Engineering Division budget, there's just a very modest amount of overtime available for projects that may occasionally work a Saturday here or an extra long day there. But in this case, because of the magnitude and size of the project, the number of weeks involved, city staff will have to be on the job site for the entire workday and in six days a week. So though, we did not budget this amount of money for overtime, and this would be funded, of course, with city, local motorfield, excuse me, city, yeah, local motor fuel tax funds. So it's recommended that this ordinance, budget ordinance, be approved so that we would adequately compensate our staff.
Charlie?
I take it that when we were first thinking about this project, we didn't expect somebody wanting to work 10 hours a day, six days a week, right?
We did not require that in the specifications. It's the contractor's choosing.
And, and so, yeah, so they, well, you know, I'm glad to see it being done 60 hours a week. I mean, it means the project's gonna get done on time, and, and so, given that, I never, I see no other choice but to recommend, let me send this to council with recommendation for approval. So I'll move that.
Second.
Moved by Charlie, seconded by Eric. Discussion, Mike?
I would just have to say, I'm sure you've all, you folks have all driven down there. I have, and that concrete came out quick. Very impressive. So, I mean, with this thing coming in the bit, you know, under what the engineers thought it would be, I think this is kind of a de minimis amount to make sure the project is expedited.
Bill?
Just to give council a quick update where we are with the project. Right now, we're undercutting or will be removing soft areas and putting in stone as a better, firmer base. So that work is going on, along with pipe under drains. The pavement built in 91 did not have perforated pipe to take away that water that could sit in the subgrade and adds, it's a soft base, lack of support, helps break up the pavement. So contractor will be doing that. Then it'll be prepping and trimming the subbase and probably slip forming curb and gutter, maybe two, three weeks, probably three weeks from now. And once the curb and gutter is in, and then they'll be looking at paving main line in the weeks thereafter. So, you know, fingers crossed, good weather before the snow flies. We hope you have those westbound lanes done. So that's kind of the progression you'll be seeing. And I agree, the very large backhoe excavators removed that concrete and loaded it out. It all went up to North Lincoln Avenue up at Max for recycling, and it'll be used as a road base for some other projects somewhere. It's not a, I guess, what happened is, is, you know, and I meant, use the word cancer. People are thinking, well, it's gonna contaminate elsewhere. No, it'll be a fine subbase material for roads anywhere. It's just that, in its solid state, as a concrete mix, it was not good, so.
See, it will grow. It will reproduce.
It will reproduce. No, once it's broken up and it's finer parts, it'll be just fine, so.
So will all four lanes be open during the winter?
It's not our intent, because the other two lanes are in horrible shape.
It's not your intent? Is that what you're...
It's not our intent.
Good. Okay.
But it is a very slow go, and I understand that, but no, it'll be just two lanes.
Okay. Bill? Any question?
Yeah, just, and on other projects, I think on Main Street, we did contract out the observation expenses, I think. And I assume that paying our own staff, we didn't have the staff at the time to do it ourselves. I assume paying our own staff overtime is a less costly option.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks.
We did have a motion and second, right? Okay, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. This, that passes.
I was gonna add another comment. I've just been real impressed with the, with the various crews that we have out building the local motor fuel tax work in my neighborhood. It's just boom, boom, boom. And boy, at seven o'clock in the morning, I can count on the jackhammer outside my window.
And it's a beautiful sound. With no further business before the council, this meeting's adjourned.